From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Tuesday afternoon, 2:00 PM session of the April 17 meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're happy that you joined us this afternoon. The meeting will reconvene. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Leeason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Mr. Nations, our county council, would you please give us a report on action taken in closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board did not meet in closed session on item 22 from the morning agenda because it proved to be unnecessary. The Board did meet in closed session on items 23, 24, and 25. No reportable actions were taken there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. We're going to move forward with our consent agenda first. Consent items are considered to be routine by staff and typically are voted on all at once. If a member of the public would like to ask a question about our consent, any item on consent, you can raise your hand and I'll recognize you to make your comment about that. And then if a board member wishes to pull an item for separate consideration or make a motion on the consent calendar as a whole, we'll proceed as according to how the Board would like to proceed about that. So first, let me tell you what's on consent, beginning on page two of this afternoon's agenda. Item number four. On page three, all the items five through 11. On page four, all the items 12 through 16. On page five, items 17 through 21, and then 24. On page six, all the items 25 through 31. On page seven, all the items 32 through 39. And on page eight, items 40 through 43. Do any members of the public wish to make comment or ask a question about an item on consent? Yes, sir. Which number would you like?
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay. Could you please come forward and ask your question? And could you give us your name for the record, please?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Dennis Fox. Several years ago, during an El Nino year, two towns in this area flooded. One was Early Mart. The other was Lamont. Two counties, both of them Tulare and Kern, had crips, my suggestion, to take care of the problems. Neither county did it. You'll notice this last time, though, Lamont flooded, Early Mart didn't, because of the -- it was the White River was taken care of by the Tulano-Early Mart Water District, whose manager previously had been with the SCS and had worked with resource districts. And resource districts in this area are not very active as they -- when they came up with the aqueduct, they were -- their function was supposed to be taken over by water districts. That's what happened there. Generally, it isn't. Here, you have a chance to have a resource district into Hatchapi, which could do two things for you. One, the fires. They work off of grants for the federal agencies to thin the forests and cut down the trees, and their fire department could take areas that have structures. The other one is the flooding, because the water that floods Lamont is coming from the Hatchapi and down that watershed. When it had the crib here, it just grew up into something, you couldn't do anything. It just became the big deal. The water, the resource districts work one watershed at a time, and then if that doesn't do it, you do another. I am suggesting that instead of having them pay it, you lease it to them for a couple hundred thou -- a bit, but you turn that money back in to them so that that can be a county match, so they can obtain some grants. That's my plot, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Fox, thank you.
Thank you. I think that'll work.
You normally have a --
Something to consider between now and the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to make comment about anything this afternoon? Okay, I'm going to close that part of our meeting and return to the Board. With regard to our consent agenda, does anybody want to pull an item, or is there a motion to proceed with consent as it's been listed?
Motion on consent?
Second.
A motion and a second? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. Next, on page two, is item number one, Public Presentations. We offer an opportunity for the public to speak to us about any matter that's not on our agenda. I'm going to use my prerogative as the chair this afternoon to change that just slightly, though. We have a member of the public, Sandra Carter, as I understand it, who is about to do her civic duty and jury duty in just a few minutes. And we're going to let her speak to item number three, which has to do with the cell tower up in Frasier Park. We're going to let her speak now so she can go on about her civic duty. So are you Ms. Carter?
We did send a letter, my husband and I, Carl and Sandra Carter. We sent a letter in opposition to the cell tower that AT&amp;T planned to build on the Pentecostal Church Camp in Cuddy Valley. And we are opposed to it. I also sent an email, and we are concerned about our roads. We are opposed to having our pristine, beautiful view being ruined, and we don't really understand why we need a cell tower. And we are concerned about the lack of an environmental impact study and what are the guarantees of the cell tower being able to withstand an earthquake? And also, I am concerned because of some of the references in the staff report that the AT&amp;T have presented. One of them is having to do with the petitions. We had 51 residents of Cuddy Valley alone sign a petition saying that they oppose the cell tower. The other petition that came out saying they were for the cell tower were from places other than Frasier Park and Cuddy Valley. And just to refer to your mission statement and your vision statement, which I don't see posted anywhere, the mission statement says, for the Kern County Board of Supervisors, "to enhance the quality of life in Kern County by protecting and serving our citizens." And if I were a supervisor, I would take offense that the wool is being pulled over your eyes in reference to who is for and who is against the cell tower. Also, I'd like to make reference to the fact that we already have internet and cellphone service, AT&amp;T. And one of the other things that bothers me about the information that was posted by AT&amp;T is the equipment, or, excuse me, the road. They were talking about going to Dorothy Lane. Okay, you got to go to Darling, to Steinhoff, to Schaefer, to Dorothy Lane, or are they talking about going to Darling, to Steinhoff, to the driveway that leads to the church property? And once again, that is not in this Kern County staff report as to where exactly the path they would take to get into where they want to plant this cell tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Thank you for your service to the community through your jury service as well. Okay, I'm going to hold any other comments about item number three until we get to item number three. But are there any members of the public here this afternoon that would like to make comment to us about any items that are not otherwise on our agenda? That are not otherwise on our agenda? Okay? I don't see anyone, so we'll return to the Board. Board members, do you have any reports or comments you'd like to make before we proceed? I see none. Let's go on then. Now, we're up to item number three, and that is a request from AT&amp;T by Vance Pomeroy to appeal a decision of the Planning Commission with regard to a 75-foot-tall monopine wireless communication facility. So with that, Ms. Oviet, are you going to walk us through this?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chairman Maggert, members of the Board. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, our Operations Division Chief. As you note, this request is an appeal from the Planning Commission decision. It is a conditional use permit. It would allow the construction of a 75-foot-tall monopine wireless facility and associated equipment in a recreational forestry district. The applicant is AT&amp;T Mobility with their representative here, Vance Pomeroy. The 75-foot-tall monopine wireless communication facility would have a 792-square-foot equipment shelter and backup generator. There is also a construction of an eight-foot-high wood fence. It's located in the Frasier Park area at 11171 Dorothy Lane. It is on a 22-acre parcel. This parcel has been since the 1950s. The Mountain Point Camp and Conference Center, that center has an auditorium, it has commercial kitchens and cabins, it has athletic fields, a swimming pool, and playgrounds. So it is fully developed and has been in operation since the 1950s. The site is designated residential by the Cuddy Valley Specific Plan, but it has a zone classification of recreational forestry. You can put these types of towers with a conditional use permit in the RF district, but they cannot exceed 80 feet in height. As noted, the applicant is limiting the height of this particular tower to 75 feet. Surrounding properties are developed with single-family residences or consist of undeveloped land, and access to the parcel is from Dorothy Lane. As you know, cell towers have to comply with the base zone district, but it also has to be compliant with the wireless communication facilities, which is Chapter 19.91 of our zoning ordinance. The purpose of this chapter is to establish reasonable guidelines and regulations for the siting of these types of facilities that are subject to the Federal Telecommunication Act of 1996. However, that act limited our ability to regulate, and so we have put the necessary findings and restrictions that we are allowed to place on facilities in Chapter 19.91. As you know, our society has become more and more dependent on broadband for everything from communication to retail commerce. Because of this, the federal government, the FCC, has limited the ability of local and state government to outright deny or overly condition cell towers. The siting of wireless communication facilities in that chapter is encouraged to minimize adverse aesthetic impacts on residential areas and other sensitive view sheds by co-locating facilities. There is no opportunity for co-location in this area because of the limited number of towers. And the screening is -- in that ordinance is to seek to harmonize the tower siting with the natural or built environment, so using the stealth design technologies. And they are case by case applied to the cell towers. It is not always a monopine. In one case, it was a fake windmill-type operation, so it is case by case in each As I noted, Chapter 19.91 of the zoning ordinance does allow us to manage certain things. However, we are limited by the Telecommunications Act of 1996. It limits our local siting. It says that we cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers, for example. We can't prohibit merely because a competing provider has cell service. We cannot deny another cell provider based on that. The federal government has specifically noted that radio frequency emissions, also called EMF, cannot be used directly or indirectly, or any concerns about health effects, to deny or condition a cell tower. That is specifically prohibited. Your Board is very familiar with EMFs, as this issue continually has come up on wind turbines and solar projects. But in this case, there is a specific prohibition by Congress on your ability to preclude an environmental review of any of these concerns. Further, as I noted, there are court rulings that a zoning board's denial of a permit for providing, in this case, this is an appeal, and you are now the zoning board. Between two cellular providers constitutes unreasonable discrimination. You can't decide there's enough towers and just because another provider provides service that you can deny the application. During the course of this processing, as noted by the commenter, there have been comment letters and petitions. We have a petition signed by 175 people plus additional comments that provided to you in opposition to the project, a petition in the record from 126 residents in support of the project, along with a letter from the property owner. And Mr. Vance Pomeroy, representing the applicant, will be submitting more petitions in support of the project. The opposition concerns that we heard and will -- you were here today include an intrusion into a beautiful natural area and the aesthetics for the people who live on properties in the area, impacts on property values, EMF and health concerns, and impacts on the roads. As part of the opposition comments, staff received a request from various property owners to require the installation of 100 to 150 trees on the project site to further reduce the aesthetic impacts. A breakdown of the cost has been provided in your staff report, and it would be well over or within the range of $300,000 to impose that condition. The Planning Commission did consider this project on March 8, 2018. The commission requested additional conditions, and they requested a continuance. However, as noted in your staff report, the federal government has also limited and required mandated time periods by which your, you know, our process must finish or it is deemed approved. The applicant was open to additional conditions, however, they were not open to a continuance since they'd already granted a waiver once, and the applicant then for declined. There were three commissioners who voted to deny the project, one who voted to approve, who did not support that motion, and one who was not there. I believe they were very sympathetic to the neighbors' complaints. This is a difficult situation where you have the federal government imposing restrictions. While we all enjoy our broadband and we enjoy streaming and we enjoy our phones, our neighborhoods are very important to us. This community is very attached to their view sheds and their lifestyle. The commissioners were sympathetic to that. They were frustrated by their inability to get a continuance, and so they denied the project. Staff has reviewed the commissioners' action with legal counsel, however, and determined that that decision was not supported by sufficient legal findings. On appeal, your Board is not bound by the commission's decision. Staff is recommending approval of the appeal and approval of the conditional use permit as required to comply with the Federal Telecommunications Act, however, not before we have imposed more restrictions on it. In this case, the applicant has moved the tower 15 feet further west, shielded from the county roads, so it would blend in with the surrounding trees. So this is the boundary of the parent parcel. Those trees are all existing. This is the proposed tower location, and we have prepared visual simulations of what it would look like after it was built. We've provided those to you. In addition, the applicant has agreed to provide four trees to the camp, of which two of the trees are designated to the project area, so that they are installed within 600 feet. The concern that we heard in the comments is that with the drought, with other issues, perhaps all the trees would die and we would end up with a monopine that you could still see. The applicant, there is a difference between the applicant's accedence to six trees and $300,000 of trees, which staff believes, along with counsel, is an unreasonable demand that cannot be legally required. In addition, of course, we have Condition 5K. That is Condition 4E. In Condition 5K, we describe the stealth technology. We describe the conical shape and the type of branch density so that it blends with the trees. The potential loss of property value is speculative. It is unclear. Once again, this is a 22-acre parcel that is completely surrounded by these trees. It is run by this church camp, and this is not like a cell tower that is next door to you on an urban street or even completely visible from people's properties. Therefore, we are unable to determine any loss of the property value. Some of that is in the eye of the beholder. Regarding the traffic impacts, Dorothy Lane is not a county-maintained road, but it is a 60-foot public access easement. It is designed to be used for public access. Construction aspects are four to five weeks, less than 10 trips per day. Once it's constructed, there would be infrequent maintenance. Condition 4F was added. We will videotape the roads, since the roads are -- the residents up there pay to maintain some of these roads. We will videotape the roads before they move in. If there is any change or documented damage because of that truck construction traffic, they will be required to fix it back to the condition it was right now. In addition, they're going to put a dust binder on all paved roads. They can only use Dorothy Lane. There were many questions about the, what we call, gap coverage, which is, you know, do we really need this? Is there an anticipated coverage area for AT&amp;T? And so we have received that information, provided it to you. That is provided on a provider-by-provision basis. However, since the Planning Commission decision and questions raised by the neighbors as to where you -- could you move that cell tower to some other part of the project site? The applicant representative has conducted further review, provided you with maps and explanation, and would like to present those findings to you today. We have listened carefully to the concerns of the neighbors. We've attempted to address those concerns within the limitations and restrictions of the Federal Telecommunications Act. I would note that the SEQA exemption, the SEQA exemption was 15303, is an exemption for small structures. You could build an entire single-family house of 2,500 square feet with that exemption. In this case, we're building a very small equipment shed, generator, tower, and it is on a piece of this church camp that at this time is already disturbed. And the site is not an isolated, pristine piece of property as it has been impacted since the 1950s with a camp, as well as all the buildings. Therefore, that SEQA finding is sufficient, and you've been provided with the findings in your recommended conditions. We do not believe that the requests that have been made can be legally defended. They are an unreasonable requirement. They're not permitted under the act, and therefore, there is not sufficient evidence in the record to legally deny this cell tower. However, these additional conditions have been placed on this proposal, and in conclusion, staff is recommending that you open the hearing, receive public comment, close comment, and per the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department recommendation, approve the appeal, adopt resolutions and findings approving conditional use permit, subject to all of these expanded conditions. I'm available for questions, and I'd like to ask you to permit the AT&amp;T representative, as the applicant for the appeal, to provide their presentation of the materials they provided to you.
Colleagues, do you have any questions for Ms. Oviet before we hear from the AT&amp;T rep? Okay, who's here today representing AT&amp;T?
My name is Vance Pomeroy, representing AT&amp;T today on the appeal of the Planning Commission decision. We've had an opportunity to review staff's report, as well as the conditions that are presented to you today from staff, and we're amenable to those conditions. In regard to the additional information that we're able to provide you today, which does fill in the record in a manner that will assist you in making your decision, I'm going to proceed with the slides that you see before you on your monitor and up on the large screen. Hopefully, I pressed the correct button here. Very good. As you can see, this is similar to the map that was provided on the screen by staff. The subject area is in Cuddy Valley. AT&amp;T determined by their radar frequency engineers that there was a gap in coverage for the technologies that they're providing at this site. And so we looked around and found, not sure where to point this. I'm not getting you. I'm hitting the arrow button. There you go. The initial search area that the radar frequency engineers identified is the red circle on the map there. It's on the property just north of what became the subject property of this proposal. And so we moved on to the proposed site, which is Mountain Point Camp, which, as the director noted, has been there since the 50s. Right now, the precise siting is constrained by a variety of things, which are part of how the code is written. In order to make one of these towers stealth, hard-to-see, camouflaged, it would be best to not be out in the open. So if you look at the green on the map that I've overlaid, that is where there are no trees. So it would be a bit bare in those areas, and that extends pretty far to the east and to the north off of that image. So you can see that the edge of the woodland on the site is, that's not covered in green, would be where we'd try and look next. We also would want to be -- next. The -- although the county minimum standard for our distance from the nearest off-site dwelling unit is 100 feet, it makes sense for us to try and be as far away from any of the budding properties' residences. So if we run through these next few slides, you'll see that we have provided, next, a location that is between 700 and over 1,000 feet away from the residences, the dwellings on adjacent budding properties. So we're not exactly equidistant, but relatively speaking, and of course, hundreds of feet further than the minimum that the code requires. In addition, the code requires us to be set back from this edge of the property. In this case, we need to be 90 feet from most of the property lines, and that is 120% of the height of the tower. Next. If you zoom in a little bit closer, we can take a look at the property specifically and see what kind of constraints there are on this property for how we cite and made our decisions to cite it. our decisions to cite it. As you can see, there's cabins, office, and the dining hall and dorms. We have the maintenance shop, the Rangers residence, the RV parking to the south. We have the utility uses, the dining hall, the water well. We have the subsurface constraints, the septic systems taking up more space. And then there's the recreation, both passive and active recreation on the side, the zipline, courts, pits, the ball field, and a few other things there. And then last is the future plans that this successful camp has for utilizing their property, changing where their parking is, putting in a naturalistic amphitheater space on the northwest, as well as a tree planting program. And I might note that the camp now, at this very moment, has 21 trees on property ready to be planted in that area, with another 25 or more coming in in a few months for additional tree planting, which is shown in the red on the north, just north of our site. Last. So we had great constraints on this site on where we could set it, and we've also, both provided by the property owner, AT&amp;T's requirements, but also the county code. So this is the site we can use. We were able to move it over 15 feet to the west so we could get it even further tucked into the trees, trees that are between 68 and 92 feet tall, just next to our 75-foot-high monopine. So I'm available for any questions you may have and assist you with this.
Mr. Palmeroy, thank you very much. Do any members have a question for him at this point? Would you have a seat, sir? And we may very well ask you to come back up in a few moments.
Very good.
Thank you. I think we're going to hear from the, have the hearing, and after the hearing is over, then we'll see if members of the general public would like to make a comment to us. So let's start first with a hearing. Let's have first, all those speaking in favor of, I want to make sure you understand what I'm asking for, all those speaking in favor of the appeal. So is there anyone here besides Mr. Palmeroy that would like to speak in favor of AT&amp;T's request to have an appeal, allow them to build their tower? Yes, sir. Would you come forward and give us your name for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Alan Gregory. I'm an executive director with the church organization that has owned that church property since 1951. Most of you know that we had a significant impact with bark beetle, and we removed approximately 118 trees off of the property. We've done our best to try to be very proactive, and we have replaced about 48 so far, have 21 on the property currently, and have another 29 scheduled to go in before the end of June, before our heavy camp season begins. We have worked with Mr. Palmeroy and AT&amp;T to try to do our best to place and cite the property, cite the project in an area that would not be visible and is not visible from property unless you stand on your head and close one eye and wink real good. It's very well camouflaged inside of, inside of the tree line, and with the addition of the trees, it's going to be, it's going to be a very nice location. And for our constituents that use the camp in that area, it's an essential thing that they have asked and desired to have, is good cell service and internet service in that area.
Mr. Gregory, just to make sure I understand, did you say the campers who use your facility are requesting improved cell service?
That is some of the people that assign. The recent, I think we've handed in 168 additional signatures today from groups that have said they desire that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of AT&amp;T's appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny? So they are, anybody else want to speak in favor of the appeal which would allow AT&amp;T to build their tower? And sir, could you give us your name for the record, please?
Jan Lake, J-A-N, L-A-K-E. And I am the district bishop over the Southern California District, Pentecostal Church of God. And as it's already been noted, camp's been there for several years. And just speaking on behalf of our churches, we have 45-plus churches of our own that use it, besides many other churches that come up and rent our facilities for their youth camps or for their church groups. And we want to be able to facilitate in any way that we possibly can that can help them with their media uses in our chapel also. And so, I'm, I am for this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the appeal by AT&amp;T? Okay, I'm going to close that side of the public hearing then, and now move to the other side, and that would be, we'd now like to hear from anyone who is, would like to speak in opposition to AT&amp;T's appeal of the Planning Commission decision. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Brennan. My property is backing up to the church property, and I just flipping through last week's paper, and here's a beautiful ad of property on Steinhoff, mountain views. I don't see a cell tower in there. Some of the things that are untangible as to why I'm here and how I ended up where I did is the sacrifices that my family and I myself made to get there. And I got there because I wanted those views. I wanted to raise our three daughters in that beautiful, pristine mountain area. 22 years at LA Times working graveyard. It took me two years working two jobs, driving a truck for Terry Lumber during the day, driving a truck for the LA Times at night, to get to the point, get a full-time job there, work in graveyard, to get that view that I was so direly looking for from my family, to the point where one of our daughters is pursuing a career in forestry, in geology, even becoming a wildland firefighter through the U.S. Forest Service. This wouldn't have happened in a city. This happened only because we gave them the opportunity to live in a very pristine, beautiful place. If these cell towers go through, I'll look out my dining room window, and I'm going to see the backside of the one in Pinion Pines. I go out to my porch, and now I'm going to see the one on the camp. That doesn't reflect the picture of the real estate ads in here that says you have a beautiful view. And as far as the comment that was made about camp guests want, you know, cell service and high speed, the fact that city people are going to determine what's going to happen to my beautiful view, we already have cell service, I already have internet. The cell service worked very fine, thank you, when my wife had her accident on September 16th. I had no problem calling 911. I get flyers in the mail almost weekly, you know, hey, sign up for high-speed internet. So we're going to ruin a view on something that, well, we don't want, obviously, but more importantly, we don't need it. There's no need for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Good afternoon. Could you give us your name, please?
My name is Mary Kay Stolting.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you say your last name again?
Mary Kay Stolting.
Stolting.
S-T-O-L-T-I-N-G.
Thank you, ma'am.
And my husband and I are 30-year residents in Cuddy Valley. And we shared our concerns about this twice now with the Planning Commission. We've sent letters to all the supervisors. We would have sent them straight to AT&amp;T, but we didn't have that contact information. We're very concerned about the roads. We're the people out there shoveling and plowing the roads in the winter and fixing potholes. And when they say that towers are going to be put back in the trees, what they don't mention is that 96-foot tree is going to be cut down to 10 feet below the level of the antennas on this monopine. That's right there in the small print on their maps. So what is the point of that? When you take a tree that is 96 feet tall and cut it in half, is it even going to survive? They talk about the gap in service. I'm an AT&amp;T customer. My cell service is through AT&amp;T. My home phone is through AT&amp;T. I've called them. They can provide me with high-speed internet today at 35 megabits per second. My understanding is through the Connect America, is this program has six years to get me up to 10 megabits per second. So we don't have that gap in service. It's just not right in my mind that AT&amp;T and a part-time resident from an organization can come in with the blessing of the FCC and say, you need this service, and we're going to ruin the aesthetics of your valley, we're going to take down your property values. I sit on my front porch at night, and I don't want to look at that tower as my husband comes home from work and relaxes. It's just not right that these people that don't live there, don't know what it's like, an organization, a company, a government agency can come in and benefit and profit from ruining something that we all cherish and have lived 30 years to build this kind of lifestyle. We've commuted to Torrance, we've commuted to Palmdale, to Burbank, so we could come home to this. And I just really feel it's not right that we have no say in what happens to our home because of all these other people coming in and saying, we've regulated it for you.
Thank you, Ms. Stolting. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment? How many more would like to speak against the appeal? I only see two. Okay. Good afternoon, ma'am. Could you give us your name, please?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Elise Calfayan, and I am here representing Camp-
Ma'am, could you spell your last name for us? Thank you, ma'am.
And that name is on a letter that we submitted as well.
Thank you.
I'm here representing Camp AREV, which is located at 1701 Darling Avenue in Frazier Park. The proposed cell tower will be visible to people at our camp. We ask you to uphold the Planning Commission decision, which was based on the fact that AT&amp;T and the property owner could not agree on a location that was also agreeable to our surrounding neighbors and property owners. We highlight the beautiful mountain views and forest views that are visible from our camp, and we are concerned that the views of Cuddy Valley will be negatively affected by this installation. The CUP before you indicates that AT&amp;T will plant four trees. The residents requested 100 to 150. That's kind of a drastic reduction in the number of trees to hide the tower. And of course, we're also concerned that the region has lost many trees due to drought and the bark beetle, and we want a lot more real, healthy trees and natural vistas in the area. The Planning and Natural Resources Staff Report diplomatically states the main issue, that the proposed location for this site was identified because it meets the needs of both AT&amp;T and the property owner. The specific location and inadequate camouflage does not meet the aesthetic needs, the quality of life needs, and the property value concerns of the surrounding property owners. So aesthetics and visual blight are valid concerns, and we ask you to uphold the Planning Commission decision and deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Calfayan. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Horowitz, H-O-R-O-W-I-T-Z, 1285 Imaginary Lane, Cuddy Valley, Frazier Park, United States of America. And I wanted to talk about this letter that you received. I moved with my wife to Cuddy Valley 18 years ago, and I took a city girl and brought her out to what we thought was just a beautiful area. And she composed this letter to you, and I want to read it because I think it's an excellent letter for somebody that really appreciates Cuddy Valley and the natural beauty. It says, "To the Kern County Supervisors and Staff, we believe that it is wrong for any government body to force us to change the beauty of our community. We have no public schools in this pristine valley. We have access to high-speed internet provided by other vendors. The tower proposed by AT&amp;T will not provide safety, only visual blight. We chose this beautiful remote valley, paid dearly with sweat equity to build our homes, dig our wells, dig trenches for electricity, and pay for propane and wood to heat our homes. We maintain our dirt roads and plow the snow ourselves. This is the life we chose. The cell tower may benefit the visitors at the church camp, but they are not residents, and their opinion should not be forced upon us. Please follow the courageous decision voted by the Planning Commissioners to deny the cell tower. Sincerely, Mike and Robin Horowitz, 1185 Imaginary Lane, Cuddy Valley." Are there any questions?
No, sir. Mr. Horowitz, thank you very much for your presentation of that letter. We have a copy of it here in our hands as well. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is William Sanchez, and I too am a resident of Cuddy Valley. I'm here to represent the 50 people that were unable to be here that are on the petition, and these individuals you've heard from are some of those. This is really a local issue. This is about Cuddy Valley. This Connect America, this tower that's part of the Connect America, and there's four others going up in the local area, and we are not opposed to those. But this tower services Cuddy Valley. You can look at the coverage maps, and it doesn't even cover all of Cuddy Valley. So this is really a local issue about Cuddy Valley. Speaking with Vance, AT&amp;T would never have put this tower here if it wasn't for the Connect America program that is designed to bring internet first to kids and to develop their education in rural areas. So somebody way in Washington drew a map, and we did. There was a time when we didn't have the technology. We didn't have the 10 up, one down. It also wants to, the purpose of it is also global economics. I use Amazon. My wife is crazy on it, and we buy a lot. It is to provide economic growth. It's, this tower, denying this permit is not going to affect anything that Connect America is about. It's only to the residents in Cuddy Valley. I do take, this is the, the report that you have, talks about the conclusions. First of all, the Planning Department said, "The purpose use is consistent with the goals and policies and applications of the general specific plan," which the Planning Department gave me. So on page five of, I'm sorry, wherever this is, it says, "All possible controls and regulations should be used to protect Cuddy Valley Road, which is proposed as a county scenic highway on the Parks and Recreation Plan and open space element of the general plan." Now, I understand that they didn't follow through and that Cuddy Valley Road is not a designated scenic highway now, but this statement is false based on the statement in their plan. When we talk about number five, "The proposed use will not deter, will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public property and the residents in the vicinity." Their statement here about the aesthetics is, "It's a speculative assumption and without evidence." I don't ask you to look for hard evidence or whatever. Ask yourself, can you put the picture up, ma'am? The picture, or whoever it was supposed to be.
Can you give it, sir, to the-
Yeah, he has it there.
Oh, you have, Mr. Murphy has it? There we go.
So this is a picture, and this is a picture in Idaho. I went there and visited last week and just came across this. This is basically a 75-foot monopine sitting in the trees in a residential neighborhood, well, not, it's not in a residential neighborhood in Idaho, but anyway, you get the idea. So when we look at the drawings and all the great things that the artist can do and stuff to give a rendition of what something's really going to look like, I'm speculative because I've never seen a cell tower that looks like the ones in the drawings. Okay? So- Okay, so this is an example of one. And again, back to the property values, the health and welfare of the people in the community. This tower only affects these people. And if you had this going up in your backyard, in the tree line, along the edge of the camp, I, I know you would not be happy. I know that in your heart, you would look at this and go, "This is going to affect the resale of my home." It's just, it's a self-evident argument. And again, I do believe it's an opinion in one sense, but they say "will not affect." So they're making an absolute statement on something that they say is opinion. Just a point, and I won't be too much longer. They referred to the ordinances, so basically, in the ordinance, as it was stated, "The need for the proposed facility, possible alternative sites, which they did consider, together with reasons why the alternative sites were not." Basically, I'm sorry, I'll slow down. A description of the need. So when we talk about need, and we've talked about discriminating against AT&amp;T, I challenge you to find a Verizon customer in Cuddy Valley, and I know there are some, and there are some T-Mobile customers. We are not discriminating against AT&amp;T. As you heard, I have AT&amp;T, she has AT&amp;T, most of the residents use AT&amp;T as your cellphone. Now, they're saying that they don't have good internet. AT&amp;T will provide you a hotspot. I did a speed test at the corner of Steinhoff and right down there, and it was 70. I asked AT&amp;T, "Why is that?" I went to the store to find out why a hotspot will run at 70. Because we live in a rural area, if I, if I use a hotspot here, I would get 10. But because of the density, and I'll be honest with you, I was so surprised at the 70, and normally at my home, it's 40. So I don't want to mislead you. But the technology is there. The technology of this Connect America system is so far behind what's happening. So just a point there. The other thing, and this will be my last point. We keep hearing about the Telecommunications Act, the FCC, and this big government oversight that's telling you, our representatives, that you cannot support us. So in the Liberty Towers case, when we talk about significant gap, the Third Circuit Court determined that no significant gap existed, which is irrelevant to our point. But they did go on to say, "There is no magic numbers or percentages that constitute a significant gap." Neither the Telecommunications Act, the FCC, nor the courts have established the significant gap threshold. So basically, that, that just pleads to need. We, and we don't need that. Basically, they went on to say, "To determine the significant gap in coverage, courts are required to consider the quality of service in the area and the effect on the users." So I won't belittle, keep going with that, but we do not have a gap, we do not have a need, we are not, they already are there, we're not discriminating against AT&amp;T. Then the big one is aesthetics, because that's obviously what you've heard from these people, property values, aesthetics, and our scenic environment. So in, in the Hillsborough case, they denied the cell towers on aesthetic grounds. There's numerous other cities in San Francisco, Piedmont, Alamo, Palisverdes, and Santa Margarita. The federal courts and the California Appeals Courts, which the Ninth District Court upheld this also. So there is case history that you can deny this tower based on the things that you've heard and on, I'm asking you, this is a, we're asking for one tower that's part of the big network that's serving the people of this valley. I asking you to listen to them as the representatives, as their power and authority, to uphold and deny the application. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Are there any others who'd like to speak this afternoon with regard to this item to oppose AT&amp;T's appeal? Okay, let's return then to Ms. Ovea. Do you have any responses that you'd like to make to the comments that have been made?
Chairman Magrath, before I make those comments, we have searched, we are interested, and perhaps you would like to ask Mr. Pomeroy to answer the question of whether he is cutting down trees. We can find no notes on the site plans. We do find that he is showing the height of the trees in the site plan, but we can't find a note that says he's cutting any down to 10 feet, and perhaps Mr. Pomeroy could clarify that for us.
If Mr. Pomeroy's going to speak, I'm going to give an opportunity to those who oppose the project to be able to speak as well. So, Mr. Pomeroy, can you do that in a couple of minutes?
Of course. Thank you. I'm going to flip to the drawings. Sheet A02, Existing Tree Note, Surrounding Trees To Be Trimmed 10 Feet Below Bottom Of Antennas, Landlord's Approval Is Required. That note is on the drawings, so, now that's not topping the tree, it's trimming out any branches that may have a specific interference with any antenna. And the landlord, of which the representative is standing behind me, could tell me right this moment that they'll never approve those cuttings since they've been very, very adamant about the existing trees and their tree planting program. Those, that note is there, and I would be amenable to that note being stricken by a condition of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Pomeroy. I told you I would offer an opportunity for rebuttal by the members of the neighborhood, so, Mr. Sanchez, I believe?
Yes. So basically, we are just identifying that it is here. And one of our concerns, as you bring that up, is that this tower will have additional, the ability to bring Verizon, T-Mobile, whoever, additional companies to this tower. It's part of the permit. So I just want to make sure that that's in the conditional use permit. Should you approve it, that they are stating that they will not cut trees, because as you add antennas, you're, you're bringing them down the tower. They're not going up on this tower. So that would make that 10 feet below the lowest antenna lower and lower and lower. That's, thank you.
Okay, so, sir, I just want to make sure I understand. If, if the project were approved, you would like that language to be changed?
Yes.
Okay.
That no trees would be cut, or no branches would be cut.
Okay, just want to make sure we understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Ovea?
Thank you for that clarification. We are working on a recommended condition change for your board to consider. I wanted to comment on the presentation, which asserted the concern that regulations are being imposed. I wanted to note that your board last year took strong opposition with a number of board hearings to changes by the state of California that would allow, you know, cell companies with no conditional use permit and no requirements to put their micro cells on power poles in front of people's houses. Your board, on many occasions, has taken strong positions against that and sent letters of opposition. You have sent letters as well a few years ago when the Telecommunications Act was being amended for colocation. You took a position of opposition to that. So I did want to make sure that the public knows that your board has been on record at, at being opposed to these types of mandates that do not take into account the uniqueness of each one of these. You were not, we were not successful in some of those cases. In some of those cases, the bills were amended with the support of others, but I did want to make sure that the public knew that. We are wordsmithing a condition when your board is interested that will take this note off the map and not allow any of the cutting. My understanding was, is it was cutting branches from the bottom, not cutting the tree down, so that was clarified, and we will take that off. Other than that, I think that there was a question about Cuddy Valley specific plan. The Cuddy, this, this project is not on the Cuddy Valley Road, and our information is, is that scenic view sheds, there has to be specific language and specific findings, and even then, the Telecommunications Act can overturn that. I wanted to address colocation. Once again, once you approve a cell tower, colocation of someone else would be allowed, and that was intended for local governments, that, you know, rather than having multiple towers, you would have one tower. They are still required to stealth, however. They're still required to make sure that the steffing works with the colocation.
Is that it for the moment, Ms. Ovea? I'm sorry, is that it for the moment, then?
That is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've closed the public hearing. We've heard from staff. I'll return to the board. This location is currently in the Fourth District, so I'm going to turn to Supervisor Couch first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does County Council need to address any of the comments that you heard where specific cases were cited?
Not at this time, we do not know.
Well, let me ask you about one, that, I don't know which speaker made this comment, but it was the Hillsborough case that was cited where whoever it was, a government entity, denied the location of a cell tower based on aesthetics? Do you know anything about that, that case?
I'm not exactly sure which case they're citing to. I've got all the-
Hillsborough was, I think, that was, was the name that was said.
Yeah, I have all the footnotes here from the particular cases. There's 339 footnotes for the decision of Section 332, which is the section-
Not 340?
Well, 332 is the section that kicks in for our gap coverage area. Aesthetics, the problem we have here with aesthetics is, while you can make an aesthetic argument to a degree if you are in an area that you do not have a gap coverage, from what we have now in the record, substantial evidence shows that you have a gap coverage problem. And because you have a gap coverage problem, I haven't seen anything that, at least, is substantial evidence in this record that would allow this tower to be moved somewhere else and still cover that gap. That is the underlying problem. The problem is, we do not have any substantial evidence in this record before us now which would allow this tower to be moved somewhere else and cover both the aesthetic concern and cover the gap problem.
Describe the gap. Who, could someone on staff describe what the gap problem is?
Supervisor Couch through the chair. It is a service providing issue, and we have moved, once again, in past years, the gap was, "Did I have a dropped call?" Now it has moved to broadband, and the Telecommunications Act now requires high-speed broadband at the highest rate because of streaming your Netflix and streaming your Hulu and streaming other things. So it's not just a dropped call. In this case, we understand that people up there have AT&amp;T. Our point was, is that many of the comments said, "Well, there's other providers and other cell towers," and we were addressing that. We are-
So the gap comment does not address the AT&amp;T users, it addresses all cellular broadband users?
Correct.
Okay.
Providing that, correct. I would like to note in the Hillsborough case and the other cases that we're citing, these were urban cases. These were people who were literally, there was a cell tower next door to you or down the street. This is a different aesthetics issue. This is a 22-acre church camp. It's completely surrounded by trees. As noted in the visual sim, which Mr. Murphy can put up, the closest distance is 875 feet, I believe, on some of the things that you are going to see this. The standard in those cases is a substantial change in the aesthetics. In other words, there has to be substantial evidence in the record that the aesthetics are such that it is, you know, not screened at all or otherwise an intrusion on a scenic. In this case, because it has been moved into the tree lines and because of the number of trees that already exist, and that the principal view shed will be the people inside the church camp who have accepted this, since it is the property owner, it would be difficult to defend that this is an aesthetic intrusion to the extent that you could overrule the Telecommunications Act.
Could you go into a little bit more detail about the FCC and the Telecommunications Act and how that specifically applies in this case?
Certainly.
I ask that because those were, that was a comment that was made by people in opposition.
Yes, I appreciate that. So if you go to page six of our Planning Staff Report, we have outlined the powers of local zoning authority over wireless telecommunications facilities. The Act requires that local zoning requirements may not unreasonably discriminate among wireless telecommunications providers that compete against each other. They may not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless telecommunications services. Local ordinances may limit the number and placement so long as does prohibit the effect of prohibiting a wireless provider's ability to offer services. When this was passed in 1996, once again, we were not buying everything online, we were not streaming our entertainment. And so the original Act was more interested in your cell service of dropped calls. Now that the Congress has chosen the Connect America and has made, including the state, has made the provision of broadband because of educational opportunities to rural areas, the Telecommunications Act was actually amended in 2012 to, to say that that, that provision also has to be for broadband, for speed. Obviously, even then, in a rural area, you could get dial-up. It wasn't a question of that. Now it's a question of speed and coverage. So that is now part of this prohibition. You have to act within a reasonable period of time on request, that's 150 days. The applicant did, during the processing of this project, allow for a waiver once before the Planning Commission so that we could get more information in response to these concerns. Therefore, we have, they have already given us one waiver, and they are declining to give us another waiver. The Planning Commission didn't give them a specific task, did not give them a specific timeframe. I went to complete the task of resolving it, and the applicant has invoked that timeframe. It has to, if it meets the technical emission standards set by the FCC, it's presumed safe. So we cannot replace our judgment on EMF or any studies that people have brought forward on whether they cause cancer or not. We cannot replace that judgment. The FCC has preempted that field. It would be built to those standards. AT&amp;T is a highly regulated utility, and therefore, it is not possible that this project, this cell tower will not be built to both those standards and to the Building Department's standards for earthquakes and stability. If the wireless provider asserts that the local government has violated any of these conditions, they can seek relief in state or federal court, and so this would be a litigation against your board, not a appeal to the FCC, which is a misunderstanding of people.
So is it your opinion and also Council's opinion that if we were, I've lost track of where, deny the appeal, that we would be, we would lose that if that were appealed to the, to the FCC? We don't, we don't have, your, your position is we do not have the grounds to deny the appeal? I don't know if I'm saying that right, but-
Supervisor Couch through the chair. Based on the particulars of these visual simulations and the fact of this heavily camouflaged, if not perfectly camouflaged, cell tower, I do not believe we have findings necessary to defend this, and I have made that decision in consultation with County Council.
Okay, so if, if that's the case, then let's talk about, I heard there was discussion of trees where there was 21 on the property, but there was plans to plant 29 before June, but then I think there's somewhere in your conditions that they're going to plant six. So-
Supervisor Couch, the numbers that you were quoting was the church camp property owner is going to-
Right.
-plant those. So we have, we cannot condition the, the church camp. We can, however, condition the applicant, who will be required to plant six, two of which must be within six, correct? Sorry, I apologize, four, two of which are within 600 feet of the tower. So the, the point of that is to shield as they grow from views.
Understood. There's no particular location on the map where they're required to put them?
Let me check, Supervisor.
In an, in an effort to screen them from the rest of, from the four residences that were cited. One was 720 feet, and one was 1,010 feet, and two were in between that, I think. and two were in between that, I think.
This is Condition 4D, and it's to be installed within 600 feet of the project area. If we would like, if you would like us to add language, we could add language that says, "Positioned to protect the views to the extent feasible of the adjacent property owner." Was that, was that the idea?
Yes, yes. That's what I was looking for. And I guess I could make, if we could make a request of the, if we could make an additional request of the church, could you do the same thing as well with the 21 or 29 that you're going to be planting? Church is indicating yes, but I guess we cannot. I'm assuming we can't make that a condition.
That is correct.
Would it be better for a representative of the church to come forward and affirm that publicly?
If they're willing, yeah.
Is this Mr. Gregory?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Couch, we'd be happy to place those in a reasonable area that will, when they grow and produce, that they'll be, that they'll be greater shields. That's our intent in the first place, to try to begin to grow almost a circle around the campground so that it's visually just kind of contained inside.
This was, well, that's with all of the trees that you would plant, I believe, which the 21 or 29 is just the first phase?
Well, no, we're, this is about the fifth phase that we're going through.
I'm sorry, okay.
We've had to take so many out. Most of those were taken out on the far west side of the property, but we're beginning to replace them rapidly. We just got the 21 on the property this last week, and the other 29 budget says you're probably...
So it's an additional 29, not eight more to get?
Yeah, it's correct. It'll be an additional 29. So we should have 50 additional trees on the property by, by the beginning of our camp. And we'll be happy to, which is what our plan is anyway, to continue to build breaks, if you will, visual breaks. We'll be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
There was one comment that was made, and I'll address that, but then I'll, I'll turn to the Director for a recommended motion. I want the residents to know that the visitor's opinion, well, this is my opinion, I think it's shared by the board. The visitor's opinion, the people that would use the church camp, is far less important to me and I believe the board than your opinions are. I'm going to make a motion that Ms. Oviat will help us craft to uphold the appeal. I'm doing, I'm going to do that based on staff's recommendation of their interpretation and our liability, I guess you would say, with regard to the FCC and the Telecommunications Act. And I also want to thank the people from the church that are here today for your, your willingness to cooperate and be good neighbors. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So Supervisor Couch, are you looking to staff to give us some language?
I was waiting for, I think they were working on two pieces of...
Are you prepared to do that? Or do you want to hear other comment before you do that? Give us the language.
Chairman Maggard, I'm going to have Mr. Murphy read the language of the two recommended condition changes, and then we are prepared. When you are prepared, he will read you an amended motion.
The two conditions that we would propose to revise are Conditions 4D and 4E. The first condition, 4D. Halfway down the paragraph, it says, "The two trees shall be installed within one year of the project commencing and installed within 600 feet of the project area." The additional language I would add would say, "Within 600 feet of the project area, positioned in such a manner to protect view sheds of adjacent residences to the extent feasible." And then the condition would continue, "No grading or building permit shall be issued until the landscaping plan has been approved by the Director of the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department." The additional condition change would be to 4E. I will read the whole condition, including my language. "The applicant shall submit a revised site plan showing the location of the cell tower that has been repositioned 15 feet west of the closest existing tree line and removal of any reference to the cutting down of any adjacent tree branches. No cutting of adjacent tree branches are authorized with the approval of this conditional use permit."
Supervisor Couch through the chair. I'm going to propose, now that we've heard that, additional minor changes to this. Instead of within one year, I am proposing that it be concurrent with the installation of the cell tower, so remove the one-year planting requirement. And also note that the trees need to be kept continuously alive.
As opposed to intermittently alive?
As opposed to planted and then not alive.
Not alive, very good, thank you.
Which I'm sure the residents are noting.
I'm not playing with your, the seriousness of your...
Yes. But I think, I think in hearing that written, I, I think we need to make those changes. So we are prepared to read the whole thing into the record along with a motion, and we are available if there are other recommendations.
Supervisor Couch, would you like to proceed? Or would you like to hear from somebody else first?
I think I'm happy to proceed, but I see Supervisor Scrivener would like to comment on this as well.
He has, yes. Supervisor Scrivener.
Thank you. I was, I was prepared to second your, your motion, but I want to just explain a little bit my thought process. I, obviously, the Planning Commission, and at least a majority of the Planning Commission, was sympathetic to the concerns that the residents expressed during the hearing, and I, I think that everybody on this board are sympathetic to your concerns and share. If we were in your shoes, I would, would share those concerns. But the, the Planning Commission are charged with making recommendations to us on a, on strictly a, in the, in the planning realm. But this board has a lot more that they have to consider as far as our area of responsibilities. And one of those is our, our concerns about the, the legal exposure of the county when we make certain decisions. And I think that that's really what this comes down to, is the fact that we are in a box and we are not able to deny this project, or rather, this, this appeal based on the parameters that our staff, both our planning staff and our legal staff, have laid out, out to us. Concerns such as the aesthetics, I think that because of this, this cell tower is going to be screened with other trees, and it's, and it's designed in a way in which to blend in with the existing trees. The, the coverage issue, we're not able to make a determination that there is not a gap in coverage because there's ample evidence on the record that there is a gap in coverage. And we can't depend on, we can't deny this based on the fact that there are other providers. The Telecommunications Act strictly prohibits us from doing so. And so despite the fact that we understand how the residents in the area feel about this going in, I don't think that this board has any other choice other than to uphold the appeal by the applicant. And now I'll turn to staff and ask them for a motion.
The motion would read, "Approve the appeal and adopt resolution and findings approving conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions with the following changes." 4D shall read, "A landscaping plan shall be approved by the Director of the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 19.91.030.A.9 of the Kern County Zoning Ordinance. The applicant shall provide four trees to the owner of said property, of which two trees shall be designated within the project area. The two trees shall be installed concurrently with the project commencing and be installed within 600 feet of the project area, positioned in such a manner to protect view sheds of adjacent residences to the extent feasible. No grading or building permit shall be issued until the landscaping plan has been approved by the Director of Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department and shall keep the, and the project proponent shall keep the trees continuously alive." The changes contingent 4E. "The applicant shall submit a revised site plan showing the location of the cell tower that has been repositioned 15 feet west of the closest tree line and removal of any reference to the cutting down of any adjacent tree branches. No cutting of the adjacent tree branches are authorized with approval of this conditional use permit."
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Couch.
Is it implied that the trees are to be kept continuously alive, that they'll be replaced if they die? It's the way I'm taking it, but is that what...
That is the intention. We can add those words.
Okay.
Or shall be replaced.
Yep.
Okay. That's recommended language. Is there a motion to that effect or not?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Thank you to the public who came and participated today and for, you made the project better by your participation, so thank you for that. Okay, let's go next to item number 22, which is under the CAO's office, the County Administrative Office. It's regarding legislative matters. It's a response to a January 23, 2018 referral for a study on the economic and land use implications of AB 1745, the Clean Cars 2040 Act.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. This item will be handled by our Intergovernmental Affairs Director, Thomas Brown.
Mr. Brown, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item before you is a response to a referral regarding the economic and land use implications of Assembly Bill 1745, otherwise known as the Clean Cars 2040 Act. Your Director of Planning and Natural Resources, Ms. Lorelei Oviat, will brief your board on the findings of the analysis.
Good afternoon again, Ms. Oviat.
Chairman Maggard, members of the board. We have proceeded with all due diligence with this referral since the first hearing was supposed to be yesterday. We provided this ahead of that last week to the legislature and to all of your partners in the building industry, all sorts of industries, who proceeded to provide this to all the critical legislators. The analysis summary showed a $91.2 million a year annual loss of property taxes as well as sales tax and the loss of 10,000 jobs. That was only Kern County. And if that was the only report we did, that would be important. However, we provided a calculator where any district legislator or any city or county could input their own information to find out what their losses would be. And in some small part, we did make a difference. The, the author pulled this bill before it could be heard in committee. The, we did hear back from our contacts and our lobbyists in Sacramento that the legislators were fascinated by the calculator and very interested in finding out what the fiscal impacts are on their district. There is, this, this is not over yet. There is still an opportunity for the author to put this into the budget trailer. And so we will continue through the CAO's office to monitor this. But this is a very significant opportunity for your board to provide questions to the legislature. This was provided to them as a think piece. If the legislature is going to make such drastic changes, it's been 133 years since we had the first gas station by what is now Chevron, but at that time was Standard Oil. If we're going to change 133 years of land use in 23 years, there should be some serious discussions about what impact that will have on everyone from small school districts. And some of these school districts, the only money they get for their disadvantaged community is from a gas station or a repair shop. So we are, we recommend that you do continue forward, and Mr. Brown has the recommendation. But I would, I do appreciate you providing the planning department to work with the CAOs as an opportunity to provide the legislature with something to think about rather than merely leaping into a significant change such as this. I received many, many comments from all over California about how interesting this report was, how it provided them. We did send it to the 11, directly to the 11 incorporated cities and let them know, since we also analyzed their impacts. And we are, we will continue to keep an eye on what's happening in Sacramento that affects land use and the economic viability of our future. And Mr. Brown has a recommendation.
Thank you, Brown.
Yes, sir. So, as mentioned, AB 1745 was pulled from the Committee on Transportation late yesterday by Assembly Member Phil Ting, who's the author of the bill. From what we understand, Mr. Ting will not be moving forward with the bill this year. However, despite these recent developments, the County Administrative Office still recommends that your board adopt a position in opposition to AB 1745 in the event that Mr. Ting decides to pursue the matter again in committee in the coming months. So therefore, it is recommended that your board receive and file this report, adopt a position in opposition to AB 1745, and authorize the chairman to sign correspondence to the appropriate officials.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. There was a pervasive groundswell of opposition from the private sector and from private citizens against this legislation. And I think a couple of people might be here this afternoon to speak about that. So I'm going to open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public wanting to make comment to us this afternoon about this matter? Good afternoon, Mr. Chapman. Could you give us your name and title for the record?
Yes, Chairman Maggard, members of the board. My name is Richard Chapman, President and CEO of the Kern Economic Development Corporation. And I'm here today to speak in strong opposition for AB 1745. Our mission is to retain and recruit jobs for the county and diversify the county. And in economic development parlance, this is a job killer bill. And it's also an investment, dampened significantly investment, not just in 2040, but beginning today if the legislation was to pass. We have joined that opposition coalition, and the main points specifically relate to limiting mobility and transportation options, especially for lower income levels. The, currently, EVs require, electric vehicles are basically a 20% to 25% premium for families and also for businesses. So what that means is, over 10 years, it predicted additional $21,000 of expenses. Also, it limits various advances in vehicle technologies. Basically, it picks a winner. And unfortunately, none of us have predictive abilities to determine what technologies will prevail in 2040. And we don't have that crystal ball. We are not the deciders of the technologies that are developed. And in addition, there's a lack of understanding in terms, I believe, in terms of the, the infrastructure required to support an economy based totally on EVs, technologies. Currently, less than 1% of, in California, ownerships of these type of vehicles. And the economic impact could be devastating, will be devastating if this passes, not just for our region, but the state. You can imagine about $8 billion of gas tax revenue go, go to the state. And this builds our roads, improves our roads, enhances our roads, in addition to other type of infrastructure. So thank you again for your consideration of this critical matter. And again, our concern is investment, not just in our region, but for the entire state in terms of economic viability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and thank you to many, many, many others in our community who voiced their concern about this as well. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make comment this afternoon? I'm going to close the public comment period then and come back to the board. The recommended action is to receive and file, adopt a position in opposition, and authorize the chairman to sign correspondence.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Thank you, Ms. Oviat, for your leadership. You originally brought this to my attention, and I'm grateful that you did that. And the calculator was a great idea. We'll have to use that again sometime. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you very much. Item number 23 is next, which is state funding for Valley Fever Institute at the Kern Medical Center. Mr. Brown, is that you again?
That is, yes, sir. That is, yes, sir. The item before you is a request to adopt a position in support of Senator Gene Fuller, Assembly Member Vince Fong, and Assembly Member Rudy Salas's joint budget request for a $3 million appropriation in the 2018-19 state budget to fund efforts at the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical. I believe CEO of Kern Medical is here, Mr. Russell Judd, will provide your Board with some brief comments on this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Judd. Nice to see you again.
Good afternoon. It's been a while since I've stood at this pulpit.
Pulpit. It's many things, but it might not be a pulpit.
We are here asking for your support to this legislation, excuse me, to this budget request that is being worked on by the 3 representatives from our area. A brief summary between the 3 of them, there's actually a $7 million request to go into this year's state budget to fund Valley Fever. $1 million of that will go towards every public health department in the state for them to do Valley Fever education. $3 million of that will go towards the UC's system as they work with us on research and then $3 million will be designated for the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical. The Valley Fever Institute is not a separate legal entity. It's like our surgery department or medicine department. It is an aspect of Kern Medical. The Valley Fever Institute is funded by the Kern Medical Foundation. Eric Easton, our Executive Director of that foundation, is here. We unite together to try to do all that we can for this significant disease. You know, we know Valley Fever better than anybody in the Central Valley, the citizens in the community of Bakersfield. It should be noted, there's been 9 deaths in our county from Valley Fever so far this year. We kind of have a winter season where that goes through. You think about all the other infectious diseases that are throughout the country that get hundreds of millions of dollars directed at it for prevention and for education and yet we suffer significantly here from Valley Fever. So Kern Medical is committed to our Valley Fever Institute to do all that we can. I'll point out briefly here, we have 6 Ps that we've identified that go with the Valley Fever Institute and where this funding will go, it is for, first and foremost, of course, for patient care, but public education, physician and provider education, prevention, and to perform research. Big emphasis will be on research. Currently, nowhere in the nation is a repository for basic level research on Valley Fever. The funding has dried up. There was a lab at UCLA that had some of the samples that research could be done. If we receive this funding, the Valley Fever Institute will put together a research lab. We put together in the budget to buy all the necessary databases and lab equipment so that this research that can be performed would be the repository for nationwide research on Valley Fever. Also, provider education. Even our own community, we face a significant misunderstanding of Valley Fever. We all know individuals who thought they had pneumonia, went 3 or 4 rounds of antibiotics only to learn that, no, it was Valley Fever. Significant education is needed in our community, but of course across the state. We would lead the state in that education, get information out to all the public health departments up and down the state in the need to watch over and protect for Valley Fever. We're in communication with Senator Fuller and the 2 Assembly, Salas and Fong. They've been very supportive in working with us. I will be up in Sacramento on April 26, testifying before the Senate Budget Committee so that this funding can go in. We're hoping it makes the Governor's May revision. We feel pretty good that if it makes the Governor's May revision, that it may stick and we'll be able to secure this funding. So appreciate your support behind this and hopefully it carries some weight with the Legislature and through the Governor and we can get this in this year's budget. So thank you.
We hope so too. Thank you, Mr. Judd. Any other comment by staff?
That's it. Therefore, it is recommended that your Board adopt a position in support of a $3 million appropriation from the State General Fund to the California Department of Public Health to fund Valley Fever treatment and research at the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical and authorize the Chairman to sign correspondence to the appropriate officials.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for that well-worded recommendation. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment about this item? Okay, colleagues?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, and Mr. Judd, thank you for your support and your public appearance on such a critical health issue. Thank you.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you very much. That concludes this afternoon's session of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. I need to point out to you that there is one correction to make with regard to a date at the very end of our agenda after item number 43. It says that we are adjourning to Tuesday, April 17. Today is Tuesday, April 17, and we're not going to reconvene. So we are going to reconvene next week on April 24th. So let the record reflect that we will adjourn until Tuesday, April 24th, 9:00 a.m. in these rooms. So thank you very much. Is there a motion that we adjourn? Yep. We have a motion by Supervisor Perez. Thank you very much. Without objection, so are you. Thank you, everyone.